Welcome to the afternoon session of the Planning Committee, Wednesday 7th August. Just a few introductory points to run. I'm Theresa Evans, councillor, chair of the committee. Next to me is the vice-chair, councillor Jane Rutter. There is Fiona Sutherland, our legal representative, and then we have Matthew Watson, who's looking after all the admin for the committee. This way we have Julie Pinnock, who is the Service Lead for the Built Environment. Then we have Lorna Hutchings, who's the Planning, Delivery and Implementation Manager. And then we have the case officer for whatever application we're looking at. And in this instance, we're looking at Jordan Wiseman is there. Before we start the next application, just a reminder to turn off your mobile phones. Should there be a fire alarm, and we're not anticipating any practice, then please take it seriously, move swiftly but calmly out of the door and do not use the lift. And the assembly point is on the lawn of Abbey House in Abbey Gardens. Right, so as I've already said, Jordan Wiseman is the case officer today and we are looking at application agenda item 10, which is 22/00722/OUTT. Facilitation of land into five service plots to custom self-build housing on land south of School Lane, Denmead, Hampshire. And the applicant is Denmead, oh no, within Denmead Parish Council. Land Parish, sorry for that. Right, so I'll stop bumbling on. The case officer is Jordan Wiseman. And when you're ready, Jordan, we're ready to hear your presentation.
Thank you, Chair. Just before I begin my presentation, members will have seen on the update sheet that there has been a further reason for refusal added, which is to do with access into the site. So on the first slide here is the location plan submitted with the application, which outlines a site in red. This is an aerial view of the application site. Again, this is outlined in red. This slide here shows a proposed site layout, although it is indicative, because this is an outline stage application, just giving an idea of what a proposed layout could look like for the five building plots on the site. Moving on to some site photographs, the first photo shows the existing access into the site. And the photo underneath that is photo looking south across the site. The next photograph is showing an image along the eastern boundary of the application site. And underneath is another view of the site, looking south, but shows the large oak tree, which is seen along the eastern boundary of the site. Moving on to the next slides, the top photo is looking north, back down towards School Lane across the site. And the photo at the bottom is again from the rear of the site, looking east again. And that oak tree there can be seen again on the eastern boundary. That concludes the presentation for this application. The recommendation is for refuse, as the proposal was for development in the countryside, where no overriding justification for it has been found. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. And we have several public speakers. The first one is Parish Council Representative, councillor Denise Saal. Good afternoon. I think you're familiar with the procedure. Yes, you press the button and the light comes on, allowing you to speak. And when you're ready, you have three minutes and the clock will start and tell you how you're doing with your three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Have you pressed the button on the...? No, I think that it might be 40. Okay, help is arriving. And we're starting again.
Test, test.
Yeah, the light didn't come on on that one.
No, it didn't. Okay, you can hear me now. Denmead Parish Council strongly objects to the application on the grounds of the site is outside of the defined settlement boundary of the village of Denmead, as defined in the Denmead National Neighbourhood Plan. The proposed dwellings are not sustainable, the site location is not beneficial to the villagers, the site is more than 30 minutes away from the centre of the village and the shops and schools, which would encourage and promote the use of private transport and would be contrary to Winchester's policy on climate change. There is no justification for these dwellings in the countryside, as they are not intended for agricultural use. This is contrary to Winchester's policy MTR A4, as it would result in new dwellings in the countryside location with no agricultural ties or attachments. The proposal is contrary to Winchester's policies DM16 and DM23, as it fails to respond positively to the character of the area, resulting in visual and physical harm to the surrounding countryside. The houses in the surrounding areas are large dwellings. This development clearly contravenes the Denmead National Neighbourhood Plan, sorry. The site is clearly identified as countryside and as such should be protected from development. Winchester's policy MTR A4 clearly defines this, and the development clearly contravenes the plan. Allowing this development to go ahead would set a precedent for others to build in the countryside and further undermine and contravene the agreed policies, plans and guidance set by the local authority and nationally. The proposal is also contrary to Winchester's policies CP15 and CP16, as it were to also decrease biodiversity by reducing agricultural land in the countryside, diminishing the village's rural aspect, and failing to protect or enhance the existing biodiversity. It's not truly affordable housing, it's overdevelopment of that particular site, and the existing infrastructure is not able to sustain what they're proposing.
Thank you very much. Stay where you are, because there could be questions of clarification from the committee. But it doesn't look like there are. Or Jane, councillor Rutter?
If I may, just ask about your neighbourhood plan. So how much effort was put in by your local community to get the neighbourhood plan agreed in the first place?
We did lots of public consultations, there were lots of meetings and surveys were held to gather that information. I do have a copy of the neighbourhood plan if you wanted to see how we did consult.
That's lovely, thank you very much.
Any further questions for the Parish Council about...? No. So thank you very much indeed for coming on. And now it's one of the ward councillors, councillor Caroline Brook. When you're ready, Caroline, you have five minutes.
Thank you, and apologies for sweeping in at the last minute, my childcare had a hospital appointment that overran, so apologies. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I've been a long time supporter of self-build schemes and in fact went and visited the applicants back in 2018. And in 2019, when I was portfolio holder for planning, this programme, The Street, was airing. For those unaware of the programme, it was a whole street of self-build homes in Gravenhill and Bister, and it was part of the Grand Designs Programme hosted by Kevin MacLeod. It showed the diversity of homes and the innovation behind them that self-building can bring for both retirees, first-time buyers and everybody in between. I was keen that as part of the local plan, we allocated specific areas for self-build schemes, such as that that was approved at Gravenhill and Bister. Living on a relatively new housing development, I can spot a tailor-wimpy home pretty much anywhere in the country, because they all look very similar and they have the same house types replicated across the developments. I don't want for us to have houses that all look exactly the same across every area you go to. I would very much like for specific areas to have housing that looks in keeping with their area and that stands out and is a bit bespoke. It seems a real shame we're losing this bespoke individual house types that we had for the past, because developers snap up land within the settlement boundaries. In fact, the only way to afford to build on those plots of lands within the settlement boundaries is to build the homes and sell them extortionately high rates, far in excess of the build value. It seems that the only option for self-build schemes are going to be sustainable areas outside of settlement boundaries. A way forward for this must be found if we're to stop our new houses always looking the same with the same developers, with the low-quality buildings, and yes, I live in one, so I can say that, with regard to sustainability. Self and custom builders are well placed to build high-quality and well-designed homes that are energy-efficient, accessible, affordable, and they have the ability to provide the exact needs of growing families. The government have said that building your own home shouldn't be the preserve of a small number of people, but a mainstream, realistic and affordable option for people across the country. They recognise that self-build can help get more people onto the housing ladder, ensure homes suit people's needs, including growing families, working from home or caring for relatives, whilst also providing a really important boost to small builders and businesses too. The government have and are working closely with National and Custom and Self-Build Association on developing their plans with Homes England. There is a clearly recognised need to support self-build that led to the government putting aside £150 million to support individuals to be able to do just that, and they are very much encouraging local communities to develop neighbourhood plans that include allocated areas for self-build. The local plan that was referenced previously within Denmead was submitted and completed prior to this focus on self-build. I fully understand the kernel worms that could be opened by approving a self-build scheme outside of the settlement boundary. There needs to be clear reasons and justifications why one scheme such as this might be appropriate where another may not. Those who spent time and money on trying to claim planning approval for such schemes must feel real frustration when they see temporary or permanent planning permission given to gypsy and traveller sites. These sites often sit within similarly accessible or often less accessible locations than this. And yet those who are trying to follow the correct process to build homes hit brick rules. I think it is important that we as a planning authority look carefully at the criteria that would enable us to grant planning permission to such applications as this, rather new settlement boundary is a hard stopper. The application before you is of course just outline permission for facilitation of land into five service plots for custom self-build housing. It is not a finalised plan of the houses that will be in situ. There is a plot next door where there is a house, and I believe they're in support of this application. And whilst due to the number of houses on School Lane, this is not strictly open countryside, the plot is quite an outlier in terms of proximity to other houses. It does have visibility from other areas. This could no doubt though have strict guidelines on screening to minimise the visual impact. With regard to sustainability and biodiversity, I have spoken at length with the applicants and they would be happy to put in any means that would support that. In fact, they're very keen on maintaining hedges and installing new hedge rows. This scheme is well thought out and would be a small scheme, perfect for a pilot for how WCC as a planning authority can progress with self-build in the future. Recently, there was an application for two houses, just 30 seconds walk away. I have two more sentences. I'd like to leave you with a question. If not here, then where? Thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much. Please stay where you are, because there might be clarification questions from the committee. Are there any? The councillor Brook. Councillor Pearson.
Councillor, I hear your comments about self-build relating to the NPPF. Are you arguing that self-build in the countryside, as this site is, should be treated the same way as an exception site?
Absolutely, councillor Pearson. I think there should be exception sites for self-builds and I think they should be allocated as part of the local plan process.
Jordan, anything you want to add? Thank you very much, Karen. Thank you very much for coming along.
No, Chair, nothing.
Oh, so sorry, so sorry, attacking me from all quarters here. We now have Paul Richards, I do apologise, Mr Richard, and you are the architect. And when you're ready, you have three minutes.
Thank you for allowing me to address your concern in the recommendations of the planning team. I say team because the case officer has been sidelined by the strategic planning officer who wrote this report. She did this because I challenged the figures being presented and have, to date, not received a response as to why they differ from those submitted to the government, which are now in the public domain. This recommendation for refusal is based on flawed calculations and therefore not safe to be followed by you, the members responsible for making decisions on this application. I will address the summary and conclusions in reverse order, and I hope that you will question me for any further info that you may need to avoid me using my limited time to elaborate on the facts. Biodiversity nitrates, the wildlife corridors we aim to create will improve the biodiversity on the site compared to the site's current use. The cessation of keeping animals on the site will also, at this outline stage of providing access roads and plots, improve the nitrate runoff situation. We cannot calculate the future nitrate impact, if any, until we know the size of the houses and the number of occupants that will be on site. This can be conditioned to be approved prior to any approval reserve matters applications being submitted. Number two, citing urban form and layout, this could also be conditioned to ensure that a design code is followed for all five of the ARM submissions that will follow. Should you be willing to approve this outline permission for the access road and facilitation of the land into five service plots for the purpose of custom and self-building? We're also willing to submit a unilateral undertaking to ensure the land is not speculatively developed after gaining approval for CSP. Local development plan, the figures used in the report are substantially different from those submitted to government. When the same calculation is used on those submitted figures, the result is the opposite from that reported to you. The demand from the first three base periods has not been met by the 30th of the 10th, 21. This allows substantial weight to be given as a material consideration in making a decision and is the justification that the report says is lacking. In addition to this basic fact, the calculation presented is ignoring the next three base periods of demand, which as stated in the report are growing even more so after our client's media campaign, which proves that underlying demand is even greater than that represented by the current registered numbers. Had my client not been prevented from sharing this information to the Denmead local group, I'm sure the demand locally would have been even greater. The numbers in base periods four, five and six have not been addressed and it's clear that the report is written only to try and prove that demand has not been met when it clearly has not, sorry, has been met when it clearly has not. All three have higher figures on the register than plots being provided, so the situation is getting worse each year. We did not appeal the last decision because we have repeatedly stated that we wish to work with the council in promoting CSP for the sake of all concerned. An appeal would imply conflict, not cooperation. However, if we are left with no alternative after this meeting, an appeal stands a very good chance of success due to the flaws contained in the report and the recent case history of similar sites outside the settlement boundary.
I have to stop you there. Do you have one last sentence?
I do. It would be therefore in everybody's interest for you to vote against the strategic planning officer's recommendations and approve this scheme to provide local people with better design, more affordable, more eco-friendly houses than any volume developer. I welcome any questions, especially about my experience and expertise in CSP.
Okay, well crammed in. Thank you very much. Members, any questions? I have one. This is, I believe, according to the report, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. A resubmission, identical resubmission of a previous application?
Well, not quite, because the facilitation for land wasn't mentioned previously, and we wanted to make sure that the presentation included the justification argument of not meeting the demand on the registers, which wasn't mentioned before.
Okay.
So we're giving the members the chance to appreciate that the justification for giving permission outside the settlement boundary does actually exist.
And are you questioning the fact that the site is outside the settlement boundary? You said it was based on a flawed calculation.
No, no, I'm, no. The site is outside the settlement boundary, I'm not disputing that. Flawed calculation is the fact that the figures presented to you, as demand having been met for the first three base periods, is based on wrong numbers, that the numbers in that report that you've seen are not the numbers that have been submitted to central government. And that fact was borne out by a third-party letter from the chief executive officer of Naxpa, who actually says quite categorically that the figures are actually wrong.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor McLean.
That's quite a strong statement, to say the figures are actually wrong. I wonder if I could dig down a little bit deeper as to how that decision...
It's not a decision, I'm using the facts from the figures that were presented to central government.
Somebody else has read them in a different way, is that what you're saying?
I'm suggesting that Jill Lee has presented a falsified report to you, the committee members, in order to justify the fact that there's a reason for refusal, when in fact substantial weight should be given to our application as a result of not meeting the demand, which is what the government assessed figures, as presented by Winchester to the government, actually show. I'm not making the figures up, I'm reporting what's been presented to government, Jill Lee is reporting something totally different.
Thank you.
Oh yeah, that's the fact that was endorsed by Naxpa. The CEO of Naxpa actually wrote that, he's done his own analysis and come up with exactly the same conclusion.
Okay.
I think we need Jill Lee to be able to defend herself.
I think, Chairman, this is the consultation response from one of our internal consultees, our strategic planning team. Don't do things in isolation, this would have been overseen by her manager and her team. And she stands by the information that she submitted to the board, Chair. I don't have anything else to add to that. There's obviously a disagreement, but this is your office of view.
In answer to that point, can I suggest that you question Jordan, because I asked him to clarify why the figures were different, and I've never received a response.
Yeah, I would decide who I address.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
So Mrs Pinnock, would you like to finish what you're saying?
Thank you, Chair. I think Mrs Lee is satisfied with the information, this report is accurate for you as a planning committee to make a decision today. It remains her view that we have satisfied the presumption against, therefore, the policy that's outside the boundary, Chair, and this doesn't weigh in favour of taking a different decision.
Thank you.
Can somebody explain to me why the numbers are different?
Right, I'm moving on now. We've asked a question, had a reply, and I'm now moving on to councillor Pearson, who wishes to ask you a question. Yeah?
If we can cool down a little, Mr Richards, I understand your concern, but quite frankly, you're not helping your case. I appreciate that self-builds are slightly outside the normal procedures, but I notice in the officer's preamble that you have had conversations, pre-application conversations, is that correct?
Yes.
Were they with the strategic planning or with the planning officer?
With Jill Lee and Rose Lister.
Sorry?
With Jill Lee and Rose Lister.
Right, okay, so they're with, are they planning officers?
Yeah, Rose Lister is a case officer from the...
Hang on a second.
Oh, I'm just explaining who she is.
As I say, you're not helping your case, Mr Richards. Are they planning officers, Jordan?
Chairman, Rose Lister is now Rose Chapman, who we had this morning married, so hence a change of surname. One of our principal planning officers, Jill Lee, is one of our principal strategic planning officers here, both qualified charter town planners, Chair.
Yeah. Now, in common with a number of other people on the committee, I actually was present on the committee in 2017, and this application, broadly this application, came forward. So I remember some of the arguments made at that time. Similarly, times have moved on, the pressure of building houses have increased, but emphasis on self-build, as you must be aware, seems to be reduced for some reason. I'm not in a position to say why that has happened or whether it should or shouldn't happen. We also have, as you will appreciate, a neighbourhood plan in Denmead, which is subservient to the local plan, it didn't take it over, and they're quite clear to agree that this is outside the agreed development boundary. Now, as you heard me say to councillor Brook, are you arguing from a self-build point of view that because these are self-build, they should be treated like an exception type, bearing in mind exception sites are normally attached to the development boundary?
There was several questions in that one sentence. I do think it should be an exception site, and several appeals that have gone through recently have stated that exception policy can be used to support self-build outside settlement boundaries, without them becoming affordable with a capital A. I use the word affordable as people building their own houses as a more affordable option than buying one from a developer. And I agree that, I am not disputing that we're outside the settlement boundary, that point has already been covered. What I'm saying is that because Winchester has not met the demand, according to the figures submitted to government, which is the only ones I can go on in the public domain, I'm not privy to the numbers that have been created by Jill Lee, I can only assess the site from the numbers that have been given to central government as the returns for each of the six base periods.
By numbers, are you talking about self-build numbers alone?
There's two, every base period has a number on the register.
Yes, I appreciate that.
And there are three years in a cyclic process for the council to meet demand.
Yeah.
Jill Lee has short-circuited that by saying that in the first three base periods, the numbers are less than the numbers in six base periods of seal exemptions that have been given. That's a wrong comparison.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't work on the three-year cyclic process. I've actually got a spreadsheet, which was based on Jill Lee's original spreadsheet, that actually explains the cyclic process.
Yeah, sure.
And both, using the government figures and Jill Lee's figures, proves that the cyclic process does not meet demand.
Yeah, I appreciate that, but all we can do as a planning committee is work on the information we have, and we're not in a position to question it. Having heard, yes, I understand.
That was part of the application.
Yes, I'm just going to answer what you say.
Okay.
Having heard what you said, if it doesn't go the way you want, on the other hand, it might go the way you want, you might have grounds for planning inspector's appeal. But let's deal with the information we have now.
Okay.
Okay? And bearing in mind what the councillor from Denmead, who is very au fait with a neighbourhood plan, and how that relates to city's local plan, and related to the countryside outside Denmead, as we both agree, I'm sure, it is a sensitive area with capital letters. Are you happy, well, I know you're not happy with that, but that's the way we're going to go forward.
No, can I just add that the South Downs National Park raised no objection to this development?
They don't always, I regret to say.
No, but what I'm saying is if they felt it was an encroachment towards, in the countryside, towards their protected area, they would have said something more than just no objection.
No, that's not, I regret, that's not always the way they work.
Thank you. I'd like to return to dealing with this application. We've listened to what you said, Mr Richard. We've listened to what you said, Mr. Richards, and I've just taken legal advice, and we will be continuing with this application with the evidence that we've got before us. So you've had your questions, Mr. Pearson? I'm sorry, I can't...
Chair, may I help perhaps? There is a process in this committee, and the Chair is following that process, that consists of an open presentation, the public have a chance to speak, the officers, members of the committee have asked you questions, and they've exercised that right, and there is no reason why this committee shouldn't continue in the usual process without interruptions from the floor. And I suggest also that perhaps people might like to calm down a bit, because it's not particularly productive if tempers are getting...
Apologies, I am quite passionate about self-build, I've been doing it since the mid-1980s, and it's frustrating when you can't get a point over that makes a common sense. So I'm sorry.
Mr. Richards, we understand your point, and we have been listening. I will be just continuing with the process of dealing with this application. Because I think the Queen put it really rather nicely, as saying opinions may differ. I think that's where we've got to. So, do we have any further questions for Mr. Richards? If not, then thank you, Mr. Richards, you get to return to your seat. And then, Jordan, do you have anything to add from what you've heard in the public?
I don't have anything to add, thank you, Chair.
Okay. So now we'll look at our report, which starts, I did have the right page, moment now, page 134, any questions on principle of development? Councillor Pearson?
I'm sorry, it's me, but it really is the crux of what I was talking about with Mr. Richards, but also, I think, what the parish council said. Self-build is unusual beastie for us all in the planning committee. I assumed when it came up in 2017, self-build within the NPPF had only just actually come in, or very shortly before, if I'm right, and we weren't quite used to it. We're now five years down the road. And now, we heard Mr. Richards argue that the calculations produced by the city council are not the same as the calculation he produced. Now, do we have any comment about that? Because if those calculations are wrong, on our part, or wrong in his part, I think that should be expressed now. But also, it comes down to whether a self-build site should be treated as an exception site. I know everything that goes with it. A lot of questions in there, I don't know if you can answer them, Julie?
Chairman, I don't think, in my view, you would treat it as an exception site per se, although I think I understand what you're trying to say, is that would this generate an exception to policy? And I think that's what perhaps the applicant is saying, that in this case, there should be an exception to our normal policy, MTRA4, which resists development outside the policy boundary, where you can demonstrate that we haven't met that self-build need. I think what we're saying to you, what Jill Lee, on behalf of the strategic planning team, is saying for the councillors, that we have provided the necessary self-build plots, and we're not in a position therefore where we have to set aside that sort of MTRA4 general principle. And actually, we're saying, in our view, that wouldn't outweigh it anyway, and we've got other reasons for refusal. So it's the planning balance that you have regard to, and I think, you know, your office of view is that there are strong reasons for refusal here, not least a self-build, but also that this is contrary to our policies of restraint countryside as outside settlement boundary. And we've also added the highway reason for refusal on, haven't we, that's in the update paper, Chair? And we're satisfied we could defend those reasons in the event of an appeal, and would do so, Chair. And that'll be an opportunity then for the applicants to further sort of challenge those figures, and will obviously have to support our figures, Chair. But at the moment, the strategic planning team are satisfied with the information that they have before you, written for this report, Chair, so it's the up-to-date information.
Might I ask, did the two planning officers that talked to, I presume, Mr. Richards in the pre-application, did we make notes so we know what was said? Whether this was actually discussed with Mr. Richards at that time, or is it his word against ours? Which is another safe position to be in.
Chairman, in any pre-app, when we have discussions with applicants and agents, there's often a series of notes, and then we would normally follow that up with a written reply. I can't say what, you know, without diving back in and looking at the specifics now on this one at the pre-app. But actually, we're in a live planning application, all this information is publicly on our website, it's part of this documentation, satisfied with the information we've got to help you. Our recommendation to you is a should be refused, obviously, and it's tricky for you, you've heard a variety of things, and you've got to weigh that all up and reach the planning balance. Our view is that this is contrary to your policy, so that's our recommendation to you.
Any further questions on principle of development? So we'll move on, the next section is quite a large section, so yes, the impact on the character and appearance of the area, page 135. Any questions there? There is a whole report on self-build, so we'll come to that in a minute. Then the next page, we've got the South Downs National Park, historical environment, neighbouring amenities, sustainable biodiversity, sustainable transport, ecology and biodiversity, the issue of nitrate, lots of subsections, but hopefully all understood by the committee. Councillor Pearson?
Yeah. For those of who don't know, this is an open stretch of countryside, it basically is divided up into what might be described as a series of horse paddocks. And so biodiversity is an issue, indeed so is, you could argue, character of the countryside is an issue, because some people might argue to put a group of houses, albeit tastefully designed and meeting all our climate emergency criteria, would stand out quite openly in this countryside outside the village. So when we're looking at biodiversity, how from a landscaping point of view, Jordan, are we going to deal with that? We've heard it's off the road, sustainable transport is a difficult one, neighbour amenities, it's distance from the village centre. So biodiversity, open countryside, how, 10% plus biodiversity, how is this going to be met?
Well, with regards to impact on landscape, are you referring to sort of how the site could be screened if it was ever built out? Okay, well, at the moment, at this stage, we don't have a lot of detail on that, because it is an outline planning application, so those sorts of nitty-gritty details could be ironed out with a future reserve matters application, so that would remain to be seen. With regards to biodiversity, I think it's CP16, CP11, sorry, where dwellings have to meet emission rates and that sort of thing, so that they have to be sort of as eco-friendly as possible. Again, at a reserve matters stage, the applicant might include other things to make them more eco-friendly, but other than that, at this stage, there's not a great deal presented with regards to that.
So it's actually CP16 you were talking about, not CP11, that's climate emergency and efficiency of the buildings.
Yeah, no, thank you, Chair. I think I would sort of, you know, as councillor Pearson started saying about, you know, our reason for refusal too, talks about that this proposal fails to respond positively to the character of that area by reason of its citing suburban form and layout results and visual and physical harm to the surrounding countryside. You could almost then go on, couldn't you, and talk about the biodiversity elements as part of that? But overriding, we feel that it wouldn't be acceptable for those reasons, in regard to our own plan, Denmead neighbourhood plan.
Any further questions on those two pages? 136, 137? No. So now we move on to sustainable drainage, self and custom build. Quite a lot on that, but we have already heard quite a bit on that. The service lead for the built environment. So we'll just stick at those two issues? Any questions?
Yes, Chair, might I ask?
Councillor Pearson, are you wanting to say?
Yeah, the figures on page 140, which I think are the ones that Mr. Richards is concerned about.
I've got to page 140, yeah.
Well, that's part of the self and custom build.
Right. So you're saying you want to ask a question?
Well, I thought, yeah, I thought that's what we're talking about. Have I gone back on myself?
Yes, possibly. I suggested two topics, sustainable drainage and self and custom build.
All right, okay. I'll wait five minutes while you do that.
I don't know what you're finding amusing, councillor Pearson. Yes, I understand that. Have you got a question?
Yeah, well, about the south build.
Go ahead.
Yeah, the, we've heard there's a question about the figures produced, which relate, I presume, to the figures on page 140. Is the argument that those figures have been miscalculated, and therefore should be recalculated, and perhaps therefore we should defer this application while those figures are brought up to date, so we can correctly look at that? The answer may be a simple one, no, but it'll be interesting to hear what the answer is.
This is a question, is it? Two?
Should it be deferred, because the figures on page 140 are deemed to be inaccurate?
Chairman, your office of view is that the figures aren't inaccurate, and actually we stand by the figures, and there's obviously a dispute between us and what you're hearing from the applicant, but we're satisfied with this, Chair, and we please, we have discussed it with the strategic planning, and they stand by these figures, and deferring it would not change that, Chair. I think there is a discrepancy, a dispute, that we're not going to overcome through this application.
Any further questions? At the end of the report, we then just have the issues of sustainability, equality, should you wish to, ask questions on that, and the planning balance and conclusion. Planning balance being those policies that this application does not agree with. And then recommendations and informatives on page 142. Any questions on those issues? If not, then we go into debate. Councillor Rutter?
Thank you, Chair. I don't think you could have chosen a site that was better protected from development than this one. Neither the district local plan nor the local neighbourhood plan allow development in this space. It's outside the development area of the village. And there are lots of reasons to refuse this. I'm sure there's a lot of demand for self-build. We are currently looking at refreshing the local plan. And this is your opportunity to include self-build requirements into that local plan in a way which will allow them to be accommodated in a sustainable way with local support. And I would strongly recommend you look at the local plan, look at the many opportunities that you have to make a contribution to that local plan, so that we can properly put self-builds where they should be, which is in our local planning policies. And therefore, I will be supporting the office recommendation to refuse this. Thank you.
Councillor Pearson?
Yeah. Yes, I've got to say, broadly, the same sort of thing. It's, even though this is self-build, and I remember the arguments we made back in 2017 about this very issue, and at that time, as I said previously, the idea of self-build was new to most of us, and we were trying to get grips with it. And unfortunately for self-build people, we've had virtually, that I can recall, any sense then either, which still makes it a strange beastie for us to deal with. But leaving that to one side briefly, one looks at this site, what housing, what is clearly arguably an alien landscape, as we said then, it just didn't fit. It's out of character, acres its countryside, but because it is flat countryside, horse paddock area, which has been, for various reasons, disputed, because people have tried to do various things in there, and they've been turned down. Self-build is the latest iteration of this, as I recall. And I presume, with the pre-application advice that was taken, obvious with different officers from Jordan, they must have had similar advice at that time, but they chose to go ahead with this anyway. To consider it an exception site, then you've got to say, right, okay, what are the criteria of exception sites? And it doesn't fit those either, because it's not attached to the development boundary, it's separate from it, it's an island in the countryside. And exception sites are attached to the development boundaries, that's the way they are. That's not only the emerging local plan, but also the past local plan, it's also in the neighbourhood plan, which for Denmead is more important than the local plan, although it's, the two are linked together very closely. So as much as I like the idea of self-build, and I understand why you want them, no, 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 I'm not debating with you, I'm saying what my opinion is.
Councillor Pearson, please don't have conversations with ordinary...
Yeah, I appreciate that. Yeah, my apologies. The, as much as I appreciate the move to self-build, and it's covered in the NPPF, let's face it, and therefore it must be in the local plan, if it's not, we've got to do something about that. It has to fit the general policies of the council, the countryside policies, urban policies, and this just doesn't. It's as simple as that. It's away from utilities, the access is difficult, it's away from the village centre, so 15 minutes from the village centre, if you're a marathon runner, yes. But I'm sorry, it doesn't fit, so I've got to go along with the conclusions of our case officer, and I presume the conclusions of the two officers you spoke to originally, and that's to say, look, I'm sorry, but I cannot support you, even though I like a lot of aspects to it.
I like councillor Pearson. I like the idea of self-build houses. It's something that we need, a good thing. However, with this site, I feel there are too many constraints on it, it's outside the settlement boundary, and there are other objections with transport, location, road access. So it fails on numerous points, and therefore I agree with the office.
Thank you. Yes, I mean, this is the second time that we've had this application, and not much has changed really, and the reasons for refusal haven't changed. I think there is a conflict over the interpretation of the numbers, but we have to go, we've heard from the service lead that those are the numbers that the city council are reporting, and that's what we have to go along with, I'm afraid. Denmead is quite unusual in, with the next local plan, because it is doing a neighbourhood plan, as it did before. So I think really your route perhaps is to discuss with the neighbourhood plan team, is there any way you can make this work? But as councillor Pearson has said, we have to work with our current policies, and there are very strong reasons for refusal, and we now have on the update sheet the highway concerns, and that it can't be... I'm so sorry, but I really can't have all these interruptions, there's been a lot of sighing and, you know, demonstrations, and I've tried to work with that. The system that we have is what we are doing. and I've tried to work with that. The system that we have is what we are doing. We go through the application and we're now at the end of the application stage. Well, Mr. Richards, you have had the opportunity to speak to us and you've had several opportunities in fact, because you've had discussions with councillor Pearson, and now you're sort of interrupting it again. We are sympathetic to you, but we are giving our opinion. This is what this application is, is we consider it, we have a recommendation from the officers, we've spent some considerable time on it, and we're getting to the point where we make a decision. Fiona, did you want to add anything?
I'm just going to say, I might stand to be corrected by the case officer, but I understand that the highway, we got a response from the county council very recently, last day or so, so the information was put to the committee and to the applicant and the public as soon as it was available to them.
So are there any more questions, any more debates, sorry? Oh yes, sorry councillor Edward and councillor Amy.
I'm strongly supportive in terms of, I agree with much of what councillor Cross House position, I think. And I can also understand the frustrations felt by the applicant. If their land was perhaps 100 metres down the road, we're adjusting the camera, as it were, to map, you would find an area of dense residential development, houses and plots, very similar. But we can't do that. The boundary is where it is and process followed. We should make a different decision now about the area.
Thank you. Councillor Amy, did you want to speak or not? No, you have spoken, so sorry. Okay, so we've come to the point, this recommendation, this application has been recommended for refusal, for the reasons set out in the report, and then we've got a fourth reason for refusal on the update sheet, number four.
Yes, of course. Chairman, I just would like to ask if in reason for refusal one, I would just like to suggest we add in the Denmead neighbourhood plan as well. It doesn't change anything, it's still its contrary to policy. Make sure we notify both those policies, and also in the update sheet on reason for refusal four, we've obviously didn't quite know where to end our sentence, so we've got, so if you read the fourth line, DM18, local plan, part two, there should be a full stop there and we can take out, as it will, permission Chair, with those two matters and the reasons for refusal that we're recommending to you, so if, so have that in your mind. Thank you Chair.
Right, including what we've heard from Julie, this application with the details on the update sheet has been recommended for refusal. Those councillors in favour of refusing the application, please show.
That's all members, Chair?
So that application has been refused. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, welcome to the last session of the planning committee. Have you heard the announcements about safety and, no, just saying quickly then, that please, please, this is not safety, but please could you turn off your mobile phones, put them on silent. I'm the chair of the committee, Theresa, and vice-chair, councillor Jane Rutter on the, on my right, Fiona Sutherland, who's our legal adviser, Julie Pinnock, who's the service lead for the built environment, then Lorna Hutchings, who's got this title that I don't have, oh here it is, in front of me, but I found it, and she is the planning, delivery and implementation manager. Case officer is Cameron Finch, and he's sitting in the seat there. Then around the rest of the table, there are the councillors who will be considering the application, not expecting there to be a fire alarm. If there is, then please leave the room by whichever door you're directed to, there's one there and one there, don't use the lift. And the assembly point is in Abbey Gardens. Yes, I think I've covered everything. So good afternoon, as I said before, and Cameron, when you're ready, we're ready to hear your presentation. The application before is 22/00155/HOU. Remove the existing trellis fence atop the wall along the west side of the garden at 1 Earl's Down, Northbrook Avenue in Winchester, and the replacement fence is the same height, size and material of the existing, 1.8 including wall, continuing along the south wall. And this is an amended description. Cameron?
Thank you Chair. So first here we have the location plan with the site outlined in red. Now we have the aerial photograph, the site is hatched there, so you can see the St Giles Green to the west there, and then surrounding residential development to the north-east, south. This is the closer site plan. And so we have the proposed western elevation, this is the elevation that faces the green and Stratton Road. You can see the fence there, measuring approximately 1.8 metres tall. And then we have the proposed southern elevation, which faces the park house neighbouring dwelling. So this is to give an idea of the existing trellis, and also just to give an idea of the scale of the proposal, they are of the same height. This is a view within the rear garden towards the neighbouring dwelling, the park house to the south. This is the view from the corner of Northbrook Avenue, looking towards the dwelling and Stratton Road. And then this is the view looking in the other direction from Stratton Road. I've now got some slightly longer views. This is set back to the west on the green. And then a further view also from Stratton Road, as earlier, but further along. This is then the approach towards the dwelling and the boundary from the north-west. And then this is a view from the west, also from the green. And then a similar view just further along, also to the west on that green. And thus concludes my presentation. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much. We have one public speaker, and that's Polly Lane, who is the applicant. Good afternoon. There's a button in front of you, and when you press that, light comes on and that activates the microphone. And when you're ready, you have three minutes.
Thank you Chair. I just mainly wanted to be available to answer any questions you may have. I know it's a very short application, I won't want to keep you any longer than you've already been here. Very briefly, and I won't repeat what Cameron's already told you, but it's going to be the same height and materials as the existing, it's purely a replacement. The only change is instead of going like that, the area opened, trellis style, the timber will be going horizontally, horizontally. And there's two reasons for that. The first being privacy, having horizontal slats just affords a little bit more privacy, still permeability through, but just a little bit more privacy, as you can see from the photos, the current trellis style is very open, you can look from the public highway straight into our garden. I've got three small children, so just want to little nudge more privacy into the garden. And the second reason is just to slightly bring the house a little bit more out of the 1800s, a little bit more contemporary, and we feel that the style would complement the house and the development we've done to the house just to restore it, that we've been working on for the last year. So we think that style of fence would suit the house. It's a very eclectic mix of properties and styles in the whole area. I noticed some of the objections were on the basis that it didn't suit the style of the local neighbourhood. Well, if you just take a walk and walk around, you'll see every manner and style in the local neighbourhood. There's people who've done similar slatted head fences just down the road, so. And the park house next door is very modern mirrored house as well, so it doesn't really make much sense to me that they don't think that the horizontal fence doesn't suit the style of the neighbourhood. It certainly fits in perfectly well, in my view. And that's all I had wanted to say, I won't keep you any longer.
Thank you. And then it could be that councillors have some additional questions for you, and councillor Rutter is the first one.
Thank you Chair, welcome. Are you planning to grow plants up it, I mean, I see there's a lot of ivy on the carrot one. Are there other sorts of plants and so on?
Yes, thank you for raising that actually, I meant to say as well, so thank you for raising that. Yes, the idea is to grow evergreen clematis, jasmine, that kind of thing, to create eventually, we hope, quite a green, full green trellis in the fullness of time, yes, so absolutely. It will be a support for climbing plants above all else, so yes, that's the plan.
Thank you.
Councillor McLean?
Thank you Chair. You talk about it being horizontal, is there a vertical element? Because you're saying it's of the same material as already there, so it's quite narrow, I think.
Yes, so the slats, Cameron knows the exact measurements of the slats, I think it's a cent, is it a centimetre or two centimetres or between the, each slat, but it will be a good degree of permeability. They'd be quite narrow slats, similar to the width of the current trellis. The only vertical parts will be the posts, sort of every, I suppose it'd be every couple of metres or something to support it going along, but otherwise it'll be sort of narrow horizontal slats, yeah.
The actual gap between, at the moment, is the gap the same or have you narrowed it down?
Oh, the gap I see between those, that will be smaller. Cameron, have you got in front of you what the?
A picture of it would have been nice, then we could just make it very easy to decide what you're doing.
Yes. I might have put a picture in my submission, but not on the... Just going to see if we can zoom in, we'll drop out the slideshow and then we'll zoom into the...
Yeah, thank you Chair. I can answer the question with regards to the gapping, and the agree gapping was 10 millimetres, so that's approximately a centimetre between each of the wooden slats, so a small gap with the smallest slats as well.
I think it's the same height as it was before, it's just the difference is that you can't see through it or...
That's right, well you will be able to see through it to a degree, but just less than you can at the moment, yes, but the same height as the existing. You'll be a lot less, at the moment it's like an open window, so it would be, it's very visible, and it would be reduced right down, so there will be lots of bits of visibility rather than one big bit of visibility, if you know what I mean.
Any further questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. So if you'd like to return to your seat. Don't you just have questions on anything on the report? Report starts on page 157. Well Cameron, do you have something to add?
Thank you Chair. I just wanted to answer councillor Rutter's point on the planting. Through the previous application, for the extension, we considered that there needed to be some planting along that boundary, just to soften the appearance of it, and that was secured through condition and a landscaping plan which has now been discharged, so that condition on the previous application will secure planting along that boundary. Thank you Chair.
But the applicant doesn't need planning permission, should she want to build up the greener of that area? Any other questions on anything? So debate? So this application has been recommended for approval. I don't think we have any extra conditions. So those in favour of approving this application, please show.
That's all members, Chair?
Our application has been approved. Thank you very much. And that brings us to the end of the business items. Julie, did you want to say something about the tour, the annual tour?